I'd like to welcome everyone to the Monday, June 3rd, 2019 regular meeting of the Alexander County Board of Education. Before we have a moment of silence, I would like to, to recognize the passing of a former Board of Education Chair and a former Alexander County Commissioner, also Chair of the Board of Commissioners. That was Mr. William Levitt Hammer. He was sixty-nine and he lived in Wittenburg and he served this community in many ways. If you get water from the sixteen South Water District, William had a hand in that and many other water projects. He was a mechanic and he was a farmer, but he was always active in his community. And he'll be missed. I had the opportunity to serve with him from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and two. And there's one thing about it. When you saw him on a Wednesday, he was the same on Wednesday as he was on Thursday or Friday. But what you saw was what you got. And he will certainly be missed. And I'm sure most of the folks on this board had quite frequent interactions with William. And so, there's a, there's a saying when someone who is prominent and well-respected, there's an old saying, "A big tree fell in our midst." And he will certainly be missed. So if you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll recognize Board Member Sellers and she will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, fellow Board Members, you have the agenda before you. If I could have a motion regarding approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. This time, I'll recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner for our honors and recognition portion of the meeting.
Thank you Chairman Odom, Board Members, and welcome to everyone in attendance this evening. This is always my favorite part of the meeting that we hold each month. And tonight, we're going to start the awards and recognition by recognizing Alexander Central High School Senior Lyndon Strickland. And I would ask Chairman Odom if you will come up and assist me, please. Lyndon recently recorded a school record throw of one hundred seventy-six feet, six inches to win the North Carolina High School Athletic Association 3A State Championship in the men's discus event. His first-place finish is the first state title in the history of Alexander Central's track and field program. Lyndon was also recognized as the Northwestern 3A/4A Conference Field Athlete of the Year. He's had a couple of college offers, but has not announced where he will attend in the fall. I've had the pleasure of the past couple of years watching. Lyndon's actually a three-sport athlete at the high school. He has played varsity football, varsity basketball, and now he has set this history as far as making the first state championship for track and field at AC. Lyndon, you play with heart, you play with dedication, and you're just downright fun to watch. So, and he's also tough as nails. I would love it when it took three players to bring you down on the football field. But, not that they brought you down, but that it took so many of their people to focus on you. Just want you to know how proud I am of you. We've had conversation and you will go far. And I want you to channel all of this in a good way and just know that AC is behind you. Please join me in congratulating Lyndon Strickland.
Congratulations.
And we need a picture.
For him?
Yes.
Here?
Oh, sure. Another round of applause. Cooper Castelaw was voted the Northwest 3A/4A Track Athlete of the Year. Cooper captured three Northwest 3A/4A Conference titles in distance events at the league championships, the eight-hundred, sixteen-hundred, and thirty-two-hundred meter races. It makes me tired just reading them. He has signed at UNC Charlotte, where he will be a wonderful addition to the Forty-Niners' family. We are so very proud of you, Cooper Castelaw, and we wish you the very best. A round of applause. Jonathan Winkler has coached the men's track and field program for twelve years at ACHS. He was recently recognized as the two thousand nineteen Northwestern 3A/4A Men's Track and Field Coach of the Year. Mr. Winkler was also named the two thousand sixteen Coach of the Year as the ACHS Women's Track and Field Team won the conference championship at that time. Coach Winkler has served as the ladies varsity basketball coach for two years, that's the head coach. He also assisted with the high school's football program. Jonathan Winkler, we are so proud of you and we are really proud of how far this track and field group has, that they've come. I credit you with a great deal of that and we all just say congratulations to you and thank you. Yes. Cooper and Lyndon, you got that? I just want Coach Winkler to give. Okay. Wonderful.
Good job.
And Board Member Bridget Ryan, will you help me with the last award tonight? Ellendale Elementary School was the place to be on Friday afternoon. Even when the skies opened and it poured rain, it did not dampen the excitement. Ellendale Elementary School was awarded Lighthouse Certification last week, a highly-regarded standard set by the Franklin Covey Leader in Me Program. The certification is evidence that schools have produced outstanding results in school and student outcomes by implementing the process with fidelity and excellence. It is also because of the extraordinary impact that the schools may be having on staff, students, parents, and the greater community. There are more than three hundred schools around the world, you heard me correctly, three hundred around the world, that have earned Lighthouse Certification by meeting the following criteria. The principal, school administration, and staff engage in ongoing learning and develop as leaders while champion, while championing, excuse me, leadership for the school. Leadership principles are effectively taught to all students through direct lessons, integrated approaches, and staff modeling. Students are able to think critically about and apply leadership principles. Families and the school partner together in learning about the seven habits and leadership principles through effective communication and mutual respect. The school community is able to see leadership in the physical environment, hear leadership through the common language of the seven habits, and feel leadership through a culture of caring, relationships, and affirmation. Leadership is shared with students through a variety of leadership roles and student voice leads to innovations within the school. School-wide classroom, family, and community leadership events provide authentic environments to celebrate leadership, build culture, and allow students to practice leadership skills. Leader in Me Schools maintain their Lighthouse Certification for two years and continue to foster their growth in exemplifying a leadership culture. At the end of the two years, schools may recertify to maintain their Lighthouse Certification. Everyone, I ask you to join me in congratulating Ellendale Elementary's Lighthouse Team, their Principal, Crystal Hoag, the students, staff, parents, and the Ellendale community. We celebrate this achievement with you. A job well done.
Sure. We have Amy Syke, music teacher extraordinaire, Monica Mitchell, first-grade teacher, Amber Barnes, counselor, who is also the Lighthouse Coach for our school. So, a lot of behind-the-scenes there for Amber. Jennifer Mull, third-grade teacher, Heidi Hefner, fifth-grade teacher, Jill Fortner, speech therapist, Amy Hall, first-grade teacher, Laura Sprinkle, fourth grade, Sarah Mayberry, fourth grade. And I, if I may, take a minute, and this whole really movement transformation started with Ms. Mayberry with the book study about four and a half years ago. And Ms. Mayberry will be retiring this year. So, this is a sweet award and I'm glad that we got to see this through
great segue for those who don't want to stay for the entire meeting. But, but at
for her.
this time, I would entertain a motion to revoke Ms. Mayberry's retirement. Wonderful.
Chairman, can I say something while they're taking pictures? Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Sarah.
You can say anything. I think John said he wanted to retire first. But, we will continue with our meeting.
Mrs. Hoag was in my fifth-grade classroom when I taught fifth grade at Stony Point. And she was awesome then. And she's an awesome leader now.
And if you have other plans, you're welcome to exit. And if you'd like to stay for the
Don't tell any secrets.
There's nothing to tell. Well, there's nothing to tell. So, she was awesome. And
entirety of the meeting, of the meeting, you're, you're more than welcome to do so.
what a great group of people this, you know, these people are. These teachers are awesome. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. I've seen him. Ms. May, did we have anyone who, okay. While they're having this little sidebar conversation,
Ms. Syke was Teacher of the Year, observed her this year. She was such a great music teacher. Congratulations.
I would like to brag on the folks that's doing Car Rider Line at the high school. Couple of them, several of them are seated here. And that is organized chaos. I just wanted to take this moment as a parent to say thank you because they do give out Xantacs every now. Prozac, when you need a little leveling. So, you just think, let's say, one, two, three. Three days, 'cause the fourth, you know, they're probably absenteeism, absenteeism is probably pretty high Friday. So, but hats off to the Car Rider chaperone.
But I want to go back to the Car Rider line.
You can pick my daughter up in the morning. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I want to go back.
We like to make wishes come true. So, you just pick her up at twenty to, twenty to eight.
All right.
Okay. You have before you the consent agenda. If I could get a motion regarding that, please?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay. Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we will recognize Mr. Gordon Palmer, Principal at Alexander Central High School.
Chairman Odom, members of the board, Dr. Hefner, thank you for this opportunity to come share some of the great things that have been happening at Alexander Central this year. There is a whole lot to share and I know that I'll leave a lot out just because in the course of a year at a high school, there are so many events that take place every week and every month. But here are some, some of the highlights this year. One of the things that we did this year, at the very start of the year, is we wanted to show our commitment to the classroom and we wanted to show how committed we were to every single student. So, what we did was we had a strong push this year to show off our students, our individual students and their accomplishments, and also get into our classrooms and, and share that with our community. So, this year, we had a strong push with student spotlights and classroom spotlights on our social media so that parents and the community could see every day what's going on and the great education that's happening inside the high school. Some of the positive changes that we, that we made this year was also to our Smart Lunch. So, we adapted our Smart Lunch and added more structure to it this year, which in turn added about two thousand minutes of tutorials every single semester, which is over thirty hours of tutorials every semester. That is very structured. In addition to that, the students got seminar time on a weekly basis, which means they met with an academic advisor who prepared their grades for them to see. Are you on, are you on point to graduate? Are you, are you doing well in all of your classes, attendance, grades? And then also share that information with the counseling center in case we need to add some interventions, some more additional interventions for our students. Our, we're very excited about our AP Academy. We've increased enrollment this year. We've actually doubled the amount of freshmen that we have, we have coming in for next year. So, instead of just one freshman section for AP Environmental, we now actually have two sections of AP Environmental, which is really phenomenal and shows the growth and support that the community and students have given to this program. And also, that our staff is truly committed to it. And we have created an AP PLC where all our AP teachers get together and discuss what they're doing in, in their classrooms and also so that it benefits the student. They're not, kind of, there's students that are taking several AP courses. They're not, not all testing on the same day. They're not all giving projects on the same week. So, that our students, along with being in a rigorous academic program, can still be high school students and have time for clubs and band, chorus, and athletics. We've also increased our amount of sophomores. So, having a very successful year, we have some of our current freshmen that were not in the program and saw it and said, you know what, this is, this is a great opportunity. I feel like I can handle it. And they've applied to be in the program next year. So, now we actually have more sophomores for next year going forward. So, that is a huge benefit. Like I presented on before, we're now an official capstone school. And we've also taken visits to Chapel Hill and Duke as far as college visits for our AP Academy. And we're, this AP PLC, the great thing about that is we're constantly coming together as a group, not just administration or department chair, but everyone involved. We're all coming together to say, what is the next step in this process? And how can we make this even better next year, next month, and the years to come? We also have a commitment to excellent, excellence. So, I put CTE in here, and I don't want to steal Susan Gant's thunder because she, she may present on this. I remember in June watching a board meeting where she presented. But, and, and a huge thank you to Ms. Gant for the job signing that we just recently had. So, we have students that are in apprenticeship kataba. We have students that are going to lineman school. We have students that are going straight into the workforce. And we got the opportunity to showcase them and the opportunities that they have coming right out of our high school, going into the workforce or an apprenticeship, which is financially a huge benefit for them because they're not going to have any, any college debt. We have made some partnerships with some great companies where they are taking students straight from high school, putting them to work. And these are just great opportunities. We also have, our Ag Mechanics took first at the Northwest Regional Event. We have several regional winners at FFA Rally. We have a Career Day where we had over twenty businesses, closer to thirty businesses that came in with additional new partnerships this year, new businesses that came in that they really want to get to our students. And when they come in, they say, we want you to put us in front of your students so that we can sell them. We can tell them what we can start them out at, the benefits we can give them, how we can help them not only work for us, but go to school as well. And they'll, and they'll pay for those opportunities. Skills USA is a huge competition. We have two individuals that qualified for Nationals and one team that qualified for Nationals. Garrison Dejarnet is actually gonna, he's, he's planning on attending and we're working with him right now to get all that signed up. He took first in the state and first aid in CPR. Lydia Branson took first in the state in early childhood. And then our Health Knowledge Bowl team consisting of Caroline Irkman, Joseph Smithy, Rebecca Van Story, and Jordan Mitchell, they also took first in the state and qualified to go to Nationals. When we look back, we had thirty-five students compete in Skills USA, twenty-one finished in the top five in the state. So, over half, about sixty percent, top five. And what's really neat is, so on Friday of Skills USA, they have their award ceremony. So, we don't know how the students are going to compete. We went up, Mr. Lewis accompanied me to Skills USA, and we got to see the students competing. We got to see them interacting with other students, other advisors, and, and really hard at work. And so, we went up Wednesday, Thursday, and then Friday's the big awards day. So, we don't know how they're going to finish up. But you, they livestreamed that so you can watch it. So, we're sitting in our offices and we've got it in the lobby livestream. And basically, all day long, we kept hearing, "Alexander Central, Alexander Central, Alexander Central." And we were in the top five, like I said, in, in twenty-one top, top fives, which we're also competing against magnet schools. We're competing against schools that are for careers, that are for, built for Skills USA. So, it would be, and it was really great when they said, "Alexander Central, first or second place," beating out these career academies. So, you know, not that we're competitive at all, but, you know, we've, we've got a, we've got a great CTE program and it's really great to see that. With that, so the Career Day, one of the great opportunities that we have is we created a partnership with, with a new business where our students are going to start out at seventeen dollars an hour, straight out of high school. And they'll, they'll be able to make beyond that. When one of the companies we brought in, he said his lowest-paid worker last year made forty-nine thousand dollars. And, and these, our students have the ability to do that and be above his lowest-paid guy. In addition to that, he'll pay for schooling. He'll also, he also mentioned how his electrical division is growing. And we all see the economy's doing well and it's growing and there's opportunities. But last year, his electrical division did nine hundred thousand dollars revenue. This year, they're already over a million dollars. And if the, he's hoping to get a certain contract. I don't want to give out too much information. But he said it could go from nine hundred thousand dollars last year in his electrical division to twelve million dollars this year in his electrical division. So, he needs workers. He needs strong workers that are mature, that are knowledgeable. And I tell you what, Raimi Robinson puts out some of the best students that we could ever ask for. He is such, he's such an asset to our school that they're really seeking him out and saying, "We want you to put us in front of your top students" because they'll, they have contracts waiting. We also had a great French exchange program. They've presented to you guys, so I'm not going to go on at length about that. Our Beta Club is a national school of merit. This is a prestigious honor and a true indication of the dedication to academic excellence and commitment to celebrating student achievement. Our DECA Club has been recognized as a chapter of distinction in the state. And at the national level, our chapter earned the achievement level for membership campaign for the school year. We're, they're also offering scholarships. Our commitment to student athletes, this year again, a lot of these, we, we kind of celebrated here at board meetings. Pete Hardy being inducted into the Hall of Fame. We've had several All-Conference Coaches of the Year. Coach Winkler, who was an All-Conference Coach of the Year. Joe Cornwell and also Pete Hardy were all Coach, Conference Coaches of the Year. We've had four hundred and fifty student athletes this year compete, ten who have signed to play at the next level. I believe eight are public institutions and two are private institutions. Maddox Curly threw a no-hitter. I know Isaac Chapman was slightly disappointed in not winning a second state championship, but a state runner-up is nothing to scoff at. He was, he did a great job this year, along with all of his other accolades. Lyndon Strickland, who we just recognized, who set the school record. And then also Athletic Boosters, that has been a huge success for us. And some of the things that I just wanted to mention is really just the strong representation that we have. We have Nathan Robinson, who's here tonight, who's done a tremendous job in organizing this, along with Jeremy Fortner, who I don't think we could ask for a better president, who's also a strong treasurer in, in those regards. We've got membership from the board that attends meetings and, and supports us and provides us feedback. We have clear policies and bylaws which they stand by and transparency. One of the documents I brought tonight is this is a copy of what we get every month. So, we have minutes every month that go through who's in attendance, the consideration of minutes, the athletic department report, which Mr. Robinson shares out how athletics are going. Not just one sport or two, but all athletics. A financial report, potential action items for the future. So, they're constantly looking to the future and setting budgets, but also goals for what they want to accomplish. And then some information items. So, this is something that we have every single month. And if anyone wants to know, they can find this and we can post, we post it on our website and everything looks really good. As far as our financials, this year, and this is, this is a We've had 450 student athletes this year compete, 10 who have signed to play at the next level. I believe eight are public institutions and two are private institutions. Maddox Curly threw a no-hitter. I know Isaac Chapman was slightly disappointed in not winning a second state championship, but state runner-up is nothing to scoff at. He was, he did a great job this year, along with all of his other accolades. Lyndon Strickland, who we just recognized, who set the school record. And then also Athletic Boosters, that has been a huge success for us. And some of the things that I just wanted to mention is really just the strong representation that we have. We have Nathan Robinson, who's here tonight, who's done a tremendous job in organizing this, along with Jeremy Fortner, who I don't think we could ask for a better president, who's also a strong treasurer in, in those regards. We've got membership from the board that attends meetings and, and supports us and provides us feedback. We have clear policies and bylaws which they stand by and transparency. One of the documents I brought tonight is, this is a copy of what we get every month. So we have minutes every month that go through who's in attendance, the consideration of minutes, the athletic department report, which Mr. Robinson shares out how athletics are going. Not just one sport or two, but all athletics. A financial report, potential action items for the future. So they're constantly looking to the future and setting budgets, but also goals for what they want to accomplish. And then some information items. So this is something that we have every single month. And if anyone wants to know, they can find this and we can post, we post it on our website and everything looks really good. As far as our financials, this year, and this is, this is a small snippet of the financial reports that I received as far as expenditures and revenues. So to date, we have brought in over $80,000. Now, that is not all profit. Obviously, we have a lot of expenses, whether it's concession expenses, apparel, and then just kind of run-of-the-mill expenses, but they're all documented. So we all know where the money's coming in, where the money's going out. With that being said, at the last, this is from our last meeting in May, we had an overall profit of $32,000. So we know where we're at at that point. In addition to that, I've just kind of earmarked a few kind of noteworthy expenditures that we have. So when our softball team won their 10th state title, the Athletic Booster Club, the newly organized one, had put in some, some money to provide them rings. We also bought Vertamax machines, which those are great, that's great equipment for all sports. And every, every single sport kind of contributed to that with the Booster Club providing a considerable amount within the, in the form of $3,000. Overseeding fields, our mascot needed new feet. We have, so a wa, a new washer and dryer because a lot of our coaches will wash and make sure that we're getting long-lasting lifespan out of our jerseys. We've got some awards and plaques. So that was to the tune of over $9,000. And we still had $32,000 left over. In addition to that, we're looking at spending $646 on cheer bats, $2,500 on plylo boxes, bands and tubes for our, for our weight room. And then a rebound machine of $4,400 for a total of $8,623. Also, that includes pressure washing the stadium. If you guys have seen the stadium lately, it looks great. And what we do too is we have great conversations. So what we do is we say, we're gonna split it three ways. It's about $3,000 to $4,000 to get that done. So we'll say, Boosters Club, they're gonna come to the table, the school's gonna come to the table, the athletic department's coming to the table. And we all spread the cost and make it really manageable and get the most out of everything. So we're very proud about the Athletic Boosters and how well they're doing and how they're, they've got a strong vision to support all of our student athletes. And they have strong procedures and, you know, I, I feel like it was noteworthy for tonight. Next, we have our commitment to E3. So this is employment, education and enlistment. So we had our instant acceptance days where Lenore Ryan came to our school and in one day accepted 21 seniors and offered them over a million dollars in scholarships. Campbell came on one day and accepted six seniors and offered them over $400,000 in scholarships. And Western came and accepted 39 seniors. The total scholarship amount to date is just under, just under $7 million. We also have three, just under $300,000. It's literally $299,800 and some dollars of local scholarships. And that really says a lot about our community and how supportive they are of our students and how much they want to give back. So this is really a great place to be and a lot of opportunities for our students. We also have a student accepted to the Citadel, Tyler Burgess. He, he was offered the ROTC scholarship and he had the opportunity to either go to the University of Arizona or the Citadel. Citadel's his dream, so looks like he's going there, which I don't think you can go wrong with that decision, either one of those. But obviously, the Citadel is, is very prestigious. Like I mentioned, we had the Job Signing Day with Apprenticeship Catawba. We also offered some online courses this year in addition to what we typically offer. We're in a, continuing to investigate that and, and adapt that to the needs of our students. One of the great benefits that we have right now is we just hired a person in our online course offerings that has an EC background. That was one of the hurdles that we had to kind of, to work through early in the year. And now that we have someone specifically in this role with an EC background, that'll make it that much more manageable and easier to move forward there. Our commitment to community, earlier this year, with huge help from Officer Millsaps, we had our Trick or Treat for a Cure where we raised money to go towards preventing cancer. Our band and chorus, we, in both band and chorus, we've got a superior rating, an MPA. For those of you who may or may not know, superior is the highest rating you can get. And we get that just about every year, so they're doing a great job. We have several students that are going to the next level in chorus and band. Some notables that are just kind of off the top of my head. Kaitlin Austin is going to ECU and is gonna be part of their band. Laney Johnson, who is also top of her class, she's going to Liberty University and pursuing a, a degree in communication and along with musical background. We've got, as far as security, well, I'm sorry, I skipped over one. As far as band as well, so we have also restructured our band boosters and we have a new board there who we're really excited about. And we're putting the same structures that we put into our, our athletic boosters. Those same procedures are going into the new band booster. They were sworn in last week at the, last Thursday night at the band concert. They were all announced. We've added additional security measures with 24 additional cameras throughout the school building. There, we have several really high-tech cameras too, where we have 360 views, where instead of us buying like four cameras to get down each hall, we can purchase one camera and it's got a 360 view. They're all extremely high-def and really help us out a great deal when we ever have to, to use those. We also added the new security doors with ID badges. That was early in the year, as well as our window wraps to the front of the school. And we were, without going too in-depth here, we were able to gain a lot of information with our practice lockdown drill and our not-so-practice lockdown drill. Valuable information. Summer school, we are increasing the availability of summer school this year to reach beyond just seniors so that now juniors and sophomores, especially juniors who are going to be seniors, we want to make sure that they're on track to graduate. We don't want to wait, we don't want to continue to wait. We want to put them in a good position to come in the year confident that they can fulfill their, their responsibilities that they need to, to be on track to graduate. Summer school is gonna be June 13th through the 27th. I have a tentative date of summer school graduation on June 27th at 6:00 PM. And the last thing I have to end on a good note is, I don't want to put too much on Dream On3 because we've covered that quite extensively this year, but we did get the, the video from Dream On3's organization. And when I was here earlier and I showed you last year's West Iredale video, I said I would come back and show you, we'll have a professionally made Dream On3 video of Alexander Central High School. So that is what we have. We were able to get that before they posted that on their, on their site. So that was the last thing that I had.
David, and there's a lot of people that have worked hard to make this moment possible, but you brought everyone together and you did it with love, you did it with high-fives, you did it with hugs, and you did it with a great attitude. They're here today because they love you and you have impacted everyone out here today, including myself.
This is history in the making. We have never had a high school raise this much money for a dream.
I think we need to spend it on Davion. How about that? Davion, come here, buddy. We heard that your dream was to be able to attend the NFL Draft. You get to get on the plane, your mom and your dad, we're taking you to Nashville, Tennessee to be at the NFL Draft. You're gonna be there for...
Hey Davion, it's John Schneider, the General Manager of the Seattle Seahawks here. Hey, just want to say congratulations on achieving your dream and going to the NFL Draft in Nashville. I hope you're gonna be rooting us on, man. And appreciate all the, all the good wishes you're sending our way. I loved the pick of Zach Allen, that was a pretty cool one. I saw that with your, whoever was interviewing you there, but hey, have a blast and I'm really happy for you. We wish you the best.
Is this your first time opening a club?
Yes, sir.
What's your favorite cartoon?
Smokey and the Red Bull.
Davion, he was meant for the red carpet. He knew exactly what to do. He knew all the players before any of us knew them. He knew their names, where, their positions, what colleges they were coming from and what position they were probably gonna go in the draft. It was amazing to watch him just recite all this knowledge of the NFL and football that he had.
Just standing in March pit of Seattle fans, signing balls and flags. They, they thought I was getting drafted. I was like, oh, no, I'm not, I'm actually a fan, but I'll, I'll take it in, you know? Yeah.
Davion lives with autism and he has a lot of struggles that, a lot, that we don't know a whole lot about. You know, day-to-day struggles that most of us don't have to endure, but he's got so many great qualities that make him truly special.
Hey, where are the Cardinals fans at? B-red, C-red? All right. With the 249th pick in the 2019 NFL Draft, the Arizona Cardinals select Michael Dodby, Defensive Tackle, Temple.
The thing that's most impressive about Davion is his heart. He, he is, he is all heart. And that guy just, he loves people, he, he loves being here. He's so appreciative to anyone and everyone that had a part in making this happen. He said thank you no less than 100 times over the last few days. He's so well-mannered, he's just, he's a great person to be around.
I'd just like to say, just, just thank you for what you've done. I've been around at the high school a little bit and helped with some of the booster meetings and with my son there, so I'm in and out, but I, I will thank you. There's a lot of positive change that's gone on.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I recognize Board Member Schrum for an update on the Sugarloaf Fire Department.
Well, Dennis Johnson called me on Friday afternoon and said they were officially out of the building. Had a few things around the exterior of the building they still, still needed to move, but they were ready for us to do a walkthrough if we needed to, to, to end, end that, that stay there. And then, out of the blue, today, we have had a, a call from Russell Green showing interest in Alexander County leasing the building from us for an EMS remote base. And they'd have to do a little bit of renovations, not, not major renovation, but some. And I think it's a positive thing for the community. I think it's a positive thing for us until we, until the future needs where we have, you know, a, a need to, for that property. I think having it occupied is, is a good thing. I, I think that kind of the consensus of board members talking to each person just one-on-one, but correct me if I'm wrong, that would probably would be willing to maybe lease at a rate of around $500. Of course, they would have to approve that, their board would have to approve that. But I think that's where we're at as a board right now, with the understanding that they would provide insurance, the extra insurance that they would need there. Also, we'll have to have a, an agreement about maintenance and that type thing. Everything needs to be in black and white and, but I, I just think it's a positive thing for the Sugarloaf community. I think it's a positive thing for us to have the building occupied and a little bit of income off of it. Also, they would provide one of the bays to stay clear for us to do the Fire Academy. And, cause I, I know that's, we, we've got to bring our volunteer ranks, that, that rake back up for the county, and I think that's a, a place to start. So I guess the, the Facilities Committee is bringing a recommendation that we move forward with talks with, with Alexander County for a remote EMS base at the Sugarloaf Fire Department.
Do any of the other board members have any questions regarding this matter? I don't think it would be inappropriate to, if, if you refrain your recommendation from the committee in the form of a motion. That way, Dr. Hebner would, would have the ability to discuss that with the Fire Marshal and move forward if it's favorable on their side. Does any board member have any question? I mean, it's a, it's a very favorable rent for that amount of square footage, but problem we've experienced in the past with vacant buildings is, they call it a dead cost because it's a dead cost. So I think it's just to offset our utilities, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. So I'll, I'll bring a motion from the Facilities Committee that, that we proceed.
I'll second that. We have a second. About Board Member Bowman, any discussions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you for the, the update and that will be a, a good utilization of that facility. And we wish Sugarloaf Fire Department the absolute best in their new building. I knew they, they wanted to complete that journey quick, but they, they got to learn what bureaucracy was holding out. Hats off to them. This time, I recognize Dr. Hebner for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Odom. You also have a, a copy of my report. It's on, it is attached to your agenda as well as some key dates about testing and, and test results. The first thing that I want to mention is that school visits to Hebni and the high school will be scheduled in September. Here we are down to the wire as far as we finish up around lunchtime on Friday, and I just don't think it would be conducive to board visits to schools. So we will schedule both of those visits after Labor Day in September. Mr. Palmer and I spoke today, and the weather forecast does not look promising for an outdoor graduation on Friday evening. He shared with me today that a final decision will be made and communicated to all students, parents, staff and the community on Wednesday morning. That's when a final decision will be made. Discussions are already taking place for an indoor graduation in the event the weather forecast does not improve. I did speak with Mr. Palmer as far as if that changed anything with our parking assignments, and it does not. Board members will still park behind the auditorium where the bus lot is currently located. That's close to the greenhouse, if you're not sure about that. An ROTC student will be on duty at the electronic gate to let you in. You are going to need to tell them your name, show them your ID badge and make sure that they understand you are a Board of Education member. And they'll let you go in and, and get a parking place. You need to be at the school no later than 6:00 on Friday evening, and we are going to meet in the media center at that time. We will line up for entrance into the ceremony about 6:45. And as of today, if I understood him correctly, we have 307 seniors that... And as of today, if I understood him correctly, we have 307 seniors that will hopefully walk across the stage on Friday evening. Do you have any questions specifically about graduation? Great. Our summer work schedule begins next week with employees working four 10-hour days each week, and all of our buildings will be closed on Fridays. Summer reading camp for first, second, and third graders begins July 22nd, and it concludes August 8th. This year, we're going to have summer reading camp at Taylorsville Elementary School. That will be Monday through Thursday each week. Kelly Tease and Joe Mabry will be acting as the administrators for this program, and more details are to come. And then lastly, I have provided in the attachment also a document that provides some important dates for school accountability reporting. This is for your information, as we will have delayed math scores and will not have any public or official data released until September and October. So I just would like for you all to take a glance at this. You can see that mine's highlighted with some special dates. Pretty much the chart gives you most of what you need. But we won't know anything about math until September, if I understood correctly, and then nothing is official until October. And then, we have decided, we did not have this on the schedule, but we are going to have our July Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, July 9th, at 6:00 p.m. So if you'll mark your calendars, everyone, Tuesday, July 9th. Any questions? Thank you.
Our next item consists of policy revisions, second reading, and...
Miss Henderson's up, Commissioner's next.
Okay.
So I will be standing in for her this evening.
Miss Anderson.
So these are the following policies up for second revision. Excuse me, second reading. Any questions or changes?
What is the pleasure of the board regarding these policies?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Proceed, please.
And then, at the risk of being presumptuous, also next, I'm up next for the first reading of some policies. Student-parent grievance procedure, board committees, board meeting agenda policies.
We'll take those under advisement since they are of first reading.
Thank you.
Now we will recognize Ms. Cottle, our school nutrition director. Now we will procure our French bread dumper.
That's right. Thank you, Chair. Board members, Dr. Hebner. Basically, what we've done is asked that you approve our changing, our procurement acquisition threshold from $3,500 up to $10,000, which is the federal threshold. We have a lot of things, just recently, something as simple as a part for a refrigerator unit was over $3,500. So, and to do a formal bid, that's, we have to work quickly. If you would approve that, we would appreciate it.
Okay. Could I have a motion regarding the procurement plan for Alexander County Schools?
Need to approve.
Second.
Okay, have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Proceed.
Thank you.
We're gonna do our meal prices, Ms. Cottle.
Kathy, you have the next item. That's okay.
That's okay.
I didn't see when that was there. Basically, we are asking that you approve our, keeping our meal prices next year the same way we have them this year. We've worked at, having done away with the free universal breakfast, where last year we lost like $113,000 on paying students breakfast. And also adding à la carte sales this year, I think we're going to be okay to hold that price. I know there was some concern that it had been told that you had to increase every year for a period of time, but I called the state to make sure that that was okay, that we keep it there. So hopefully, we'll be able to do fine. Every time you raise the prices of the meals, you lose some participation, and we don't want to do that, so. If you would approve that.
If I could get a motion regarding stabilization of the meal price for 2019, 2020?
Move to approve.
Have a motion in the second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And I just wanted to mention too, in the letter that you received, it was just for your information, Taylorsville has been on, as a CEP school where everybody gets free meals for a number of years, but this is the end of that CEP, and we would have to apply again. There's no way we'll get it because they went from over 60% free and reduced down to just over 40%. So that's just for information.
That's a very positive trend.
Yes, that just means our income is, our economic situation is better.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cottle, I do have a question. I know that you had mentioned to me, speaking with Ms. Lingle, as far as communicating this to parents. Have you all decided how you'll do that?
We haven't yet.
Okay.
But I am planning to, one of the reasons to get our meal price taken care of today, this is, the last two years, the federal guidelines have not been released until the 1st of July, but we already have those, which is very unusual. With that being said, we can go ahead and get our application ready to present to the students and parents. And I think if we do a lot of proactive work, we can get those completed. They still have that 30-day period of carrying over their status, so they'll all start out free, but it's, in that meantime, we've got to get all those applications seen.
And that 30-day period, I'm assuming, starts the first day we're back in August?
Right.
Is that correct? Okay.
So, we will work proactively to get those taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time we'll recognize once again Ms. Anderson, the Director of Testing and Accountability, and School Policies, that's sometimes.
Occasionally, just changing habits.
Yes.
So, good evening again. This year, the state three-year plan for our AIG program was due, and you should have been given some rather large packets regarding the full wording of the plan. But what I thought would be more expeditious for us is if I went through some of the data that prompted some key changes. So, our April head count, we had a total of 572 students identified as AIG. This is approximately 12%. State funding for AIG students is at 4%. It's not necessarily a bad thing to have more AIG students than the state average. Let's note that first of all. But that made us rethink a little bit of our identification criteria regarding at what percentile on aptitude and achievement tests we identify. Discussing with some neighboring counties, we have decided to change that from an 85% to our lowest identifier, 85% aptitude, 85% achievement, to 90%, and that is in line with the other plans in the neighboring districts. So we further disaggregated that by gender, and we're actually doing pretty well. We're split even. Then we disaggregated it by exceptionality. The academically and intellectually gifted are our highest flyers out of all of that. And then our academically gifted in math and reading, and then our academically gifted in general. Those are both reading and math. And then our twice-exceptional students that are identified as EC and AIG. So, on our next slide, we further disaggregated by our underrepresented populations. So, our target for Asian students should be 1.5%. That's based on our Asian population throughout the entire district. We're at 0.5. So we'd need to target, same way with our black students, we're below. Same way with our Hispanic students, we're significantly below, and then our two or more races, we're also below. So, in our plan, our proposed plan attempts to address this gap by educating teachers and purposeful selection of non-verbal assessments. So in our barrage of testing, we had some aptitude assessments, but we did not have any aptitude assessments that were non-verbal. We purchased two different ones, and then we've also added an online component to two of our others, so it makes it easier for our non-English-speaking students or some of our students with language barriers to take these assessments. And perform to actually their aptitude versus their ability to access the assessment. So our retesting in that vein will be done using the INAT3 for students, and OSAT for aptitude, and then the Iowa for achievement. These are used in the pathways to identify the placements, specifically to include non-verbal assessment, which research shows assists in the identification of those underrepresented populations. So then, AIG by the numbers. This shows you our testing and accountability from the achievement. Where we showed growth on math EOGs, and then reading EOGs, we've actually had a decrease, and science EOGs, we've had an increase. So that also additionally means that that's where more of our professional development for teachers need to be, to target the growth in our reading areas. And then I just quickly listed the six standards that must be addressed. Much of that remains the same because we are effective data-wise in those areas, but we did look to examine those that showed some data that needed improvement. Any questions? I do require approval from the board for the plan to be submitted to the state.
Yes, ma'am. How we entertain a motion regarding this plan?
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion carries. This time we will recognize Ms. Susan Gant, Director of Career and Technical Education.
Good evening, and I'll start off. I said thank you for saving the best for last. I appreciate that. As some of you know, because you've been on the board for a while, this is an annual event that is a requirement for CTE that we present to the board. And we have our full, what we call our local plan. That is our application for state and federal funding, so this is the full plan. So I'm happy for you to look at that. In the summary that I provided for you, the very, at the bottom of it, is login information because it is electronic also. So you're welcome to log in using the guest login and password if you want to see the whole plan, or you're welcome to look at this. I can promise you that it's not very exciting reading, it's not very exciting writing, but it is a requirement for our funding, so we do that every year. Part one of the plan is our system overview and strategic planning tool. Part two is designed for us to maintain our performance attributes. And those are required under the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act of 2006. The Perkins was recently reauthorized, but this school year, we're still under Perkins, 2006. The 1920 school year has been designated a transition year for us, where we learn, we discuss the changes in Perkins, and 2020, 2021 will be the first year of implementation for the new Perkins Act. So that's coming forward, so that 2006 is correct. We're still governed by that for this school year. One of the changes we will have is we're going from nine requirements to six requirements. Really, it's the same nine, they've just been reworded. But anyway, so there's a few changes like that that we will see. Again, our application must be submitted for us to receive our state and federal funds. And those are allocated based, well, we can provide services to students in grades six through 12, so middle and high school. But our funds are provided based on our enrollment in grades eight through 12, so there's a little discrepancy just to start off with. And I will say, not to be doom and gloom, but I'll get that out of the way early, our state allotment has been reduced almost $7,000 in the past year. And so, for the past five years, I'm sorry, so you think $7,000 in five years, that's not too-too bad. But we also receive monthly, months of employment, and that's how we pay our teachers. So one teacher is normally 10 months of employment. Our months of employment have been reduced 27 months in that same amount of time. If we have additional months that we don't need to pay for a teacher, and there's usually a couple of leftover, kind of an odd amount, then we can cash those in and use that money for other things. So our 27 months is equivalent to about $80,000. So we've received that much reduction in the past five years. The good news is our federal money has actually increased a little bit to the tune of about $20,000, so that's excellent. We take everything we can get, but that still gives us a deficit of about $60,000 over the past five years. So, keeping that in mind, we have been able to maintain our current teachers, and our enrollment has been steady, as steady as the county's enrollment has been. So I think we're still providing quality programs, we're providing equipment and opportunities for the kids. But I will say if our, if we continue to be reduced at this rate, then it's gonna hurt our programs. Whether it's equipment, supplies, things we have to purchase, or whether it's in teachers that we're able to employ, because we can't do a whole lot more tightening with what we're doing now. Now, I will say, I received word on Friday that the county commissioners are, including in their budget, $45,000 for us, an additional CTE teacher for next year. We are gonna add, and I'll get to this in a little too, our public safety class. It's a leader into the fire academy, so that was a first step. But I also have seven sections in our trade and industrial education, so seven whole classes of kids that I don't have covered with a teacher. And $40,000 is excellent, and I am thrilled to have it, but that's not really enough to cover what we need. That's probably not even enough, and I don't know for sure, probably not even enough to cover one teacher. Because to get teachers in for public safety or for trade and industrial education, they usually have to have some kind of work experience. So then their salary is based on work experience, so it's gonna be higher end of the scale than a lower end of the scale. So, until we have somebody in mind and we know what their experience is, you, I can't say what a range would be for salary. So I'm guessing here, but $45,000 is probably not gonna cover the cost of the teacher. So again, we're thrilled to have it, but I'll have to add some money out of my other budget to be able to cover that additional position. So, we are, I like to include pictures so that you can see what we do. So with CTE, we do provide that hands-on, real-world experience for students where they learn technical skills that they can take into the world. A lot of people think CTE is just for students going into the workforce, that we don't encourage students to go to college, and that is not the case. I tell students, anytime I talk to them, our goal is for you to be gainfully employed one day. Whether it's after you graduate from high school, whether it's after you graduate with your doctorate degree, we don't care. We want you to be gainfully employed. And it needs to be in an area that they're interested in. So we provide opportunities for students to explore, to see where their talents lie, so that they can choose a career that's gonna, that they can be successful in. It's just as important for students to try classes and realize that they don't like something as it is for them to try classes to realize they do like something. Hopefully, they can save a lot of college money if they figure that out while they're still in high school. So, with our funding, we do, we operate right now only on state and federal funds. Next year, it looks like we'll be able to add some local funds in that also, but for the past, as long as I've known, we've only had state and federal funds. We do employ 23 teachers. We have four middle school teachers, two at East, two at West, and 19 high school teachers that we pay out of those months of employment. We also pay out of the months of employment a full-time high school, and these are a lot of initials, just education, we have lots of initials. Career Development Coordinator, Instructional Management Coordinator, Special Populations Coordinator. And years ago, when I first started teaching, we had three people, three different people, three separate positions. And now we have one person that does all that together. So it's a little overwhelming at times, especially on testing days, testing weeks. But we have a new person that just started this year, and she's doing a fabulous job, learning very quickly, so we're able to maintain. We also have a middle school career development coordinator. That position is not paid out of our months of employment. I was able to write a grant for that position, and it's a renewable grant for up to seven years. That grant is for $50,000, so we received the first allotment in January of last year, so we didn't use it all. He was hired in April. So a little bit rolled over for this year, so so far, we've been able to cover the salary and his expenses. So, so far, we've been able to cover the salary and his expenses with the grant money, but eventually, that's not going to happen either. We'll have to add some to that. We also have an administrative assistant that we pay for out of our state funds. So, this is a picture we took at the first of the year of all of our CTE staff. And so, we have one person that has retired. April Eckert left us in February, and we have replaced her. And we have two others retiring at the end of school this year. Ms. Roten, who is a computer teacher at West, and then Ms. Frick, who is one of our health science teachers at the high school. Ms. Roten's position, we are, I am planning to refill both of those positions. Ms. Roten's has been posted, we are interviewing for it. Ms. Frick's has been posted, but we've not started our interviews yet. At the middle schools, we have four teachers, like I just said, two at each school. We've traditionally taught business classes. So, one of the teachers at each location is still doing that. Sixth grade keyboarding, seventh grade introduction to office productivity, eighth grade exploring career decisions at East and exploring economic systems at West. They are coming out with a new coding class for middle school that we are looking at piloting for next year in the eighth grade. The other teacher at each school, I've got new labs this year. Our Paxton Patterson College and Career Exploration Labs. And if you, hopefully, you've been able to see those when you did your tours at East and West. The students have really enjoyed being able to work through the modules that are part of that. We've ten modules each at the school, and they're the same ones at each school. The students work in pairs or small groups. They do a little research on a career. So, there's reading, there's writing involved, but then there's also a hands-on piece also. And I have some pictures next, but before we get to the pictures, exploring biotechnology, exploring technological systems. I actually had two high school teachers who did not have four, full class loads this year. So, I can't have them sitting around not doing anything. So, I sent them to the middle schools for one block. One went to east, one went to west, and at the semester change, they switched places. So, we were able to offer those two classes also to eighth graders at each of the middle school locations. We haven't finished our course layout yet, schedule yet for next year, so I don't know if that's going to happen again. But it worked this year, and it worked pretty well. Okay, the next slides, thank you. These are just some of the pictures of the students that are using the Paxton Patterson labs at West and then at East. We did an end-of-year survey with them, and they were very excited. And they learned things about themselves, things they liked, things they didn't like. So, so far, the modules have been a success. As I mentioned earlier, we were able to hire a middle school Career Development Coordinator through a grant. So, I hired Mr. Dula away from West last April. So, he's been with me a little over a year now. But some of the things we've been able to do during that year, we started our STEM tours for eighth graders. So, our eighth graders in the county visited none of our local businesses. Were able to tour around to see what they produced, if they produced anything, what they did, what kind of education you had to have to work there. Just different things about each of those businesses. He also coordinated career fairs at the middle schools. He does interest inventories with all students, six, seven, and eighth graders. We took eighth graders on tours of CBCC so they could see those facilities and what's offered, what's available to them. Maybe even while they're still in high school, but at least after high school, and then other career awareness activities. He also spent quite a bit of time with eighth graders on course selection for high school and then college planning. At Alexander Central, where we serve approximately a little over seventeen hundred students in our CTE classes, of the three hundred and seven seniors, I think it is, yeah. Fifty-eight percent of them are CTE concentrators. And that means that it's a little bit more than just taking a class. A concentrator means they've had four or more classes in a CTE pathway, with at least one of them being a level two. So, that means they've had several classes. So, fifty-eight percent of the seniors are CTE concentrators. So, the CTE concentrators are the students that take the work keys assessment. So, we had a fifty-seven percent proficiency rate on work keys this year. This is a career clusters guide that I created really for the counselors, but anybody can use it. We offer in CTE classes in twelve of the sixteen cluster areas, career cluster areas for the state. But a student has to have a cluster designation for graduation. So, I'll put all of our twelve on there, but also fine arts, ROTC, world languages, and academics, because they can have one of those as a cluster also. So, all the courses, all the courses that are in the blue sections are courses that we call foundational courses. So, you have to have at least three of those to be in that pathway. And then the orangey, peachy section, those are enhancement courses. So, you need at least one of those in that pathway. All right, at Alexander Central, we offer courses in technically six different program areas. A lot of times I say five because I put business and marketing together because our same teachers teach those classes, but it's really six. And with our Ag program, our students are very involved in the FFA. Mr. Palmer mentioned that earlier. With our business classes and marketing classes, they're involved in DECA. This is our first year of DECA, and like he said, we were a chapter of distinction. Family and Consumer Sciences, Health Sciences, and Trade and Industrial Education all participate in Skills USA. And then any of our students, CTE students, can be nominated into the National Technical Honor Society. That's like the beta club for CTE classes. So, those are our four CTSOs. Again, I included a lot of pictures, so we'll go through this pretty fast. In Ag Ed, again, we have a strong program. They participate a lot in FFA activities and events. We offer the thirteen different courses that are listed there, and you should have this available. So, I listed the courses so you would know later if you needed to refer back to them, but I'm not going to go over each course with you. We do have three Ag teachers that teach those thirteen different courses. In our next program area, Business and Marketing, and again, I tend to put those together. We have three teachers, and we have thirteen different courses that we offer in these program areas as well. And we did add Marketing One will be a new course for next year that we're adding there. Family and Consumer Sciences is a pretty diverse area. We have six teachers. We offer eleven different courses. They also do a lot of extra activities, too. They can participate in skills, Black Eyed Eye Apparel classes, just did their own fashion show, which is pretty amazing. You've got students in high school creating a fashion line. They had to create at least three garments that went together somehow, and then they put on their own fashion show. So, they're just, they're very proud of what they, what they've made, and they get their friends to model for them. And that's just a fantastic evening. So, we'll do that annually now, so hopefully, if you've not been before, you can come to the fashion show next year. I did include a picture of the baby cougars. This is last year's graduation ceremony. This year, we had one graduate, Mr. Whitten Robinson. So, I included the picture from last year.
And he sang a solo, which was absolutely amazing.
Awesome, yes.
Amazing. He gets that from his mama.
Wow, wow, wow.
Yes, he did an awesome job. But we do have our Baby Cougar program that ties with our early childhood education. Our students use that as their lab. So, they get to go and work with the students. They develop lesson plans and all for daycare, and then work with our students. Our Health Sciences program, we have three teachers in Health Sciences. We offer four different classes. And you think four classes, that'd sound like a whole lot. Nursing Fundamentals is the class where students can actually earn their CNA one license, so then they can go out and work. But that class is limited by the state, or actually by the Health Board, I think, to ten students. So, we can only have ten students at a time, ten per nurse. So, we can do twenty at a time because we have two nurses in that program. But that's a small class, so it takes more people and less classes to be able to do that. Our last area, Trade and Industrial Education. Again, we have very strong skills participation here. We have four teachers. We currently have fifteen courses, but as we've mentioned already, we're adding Public Safety One next year. So, we'll have sixteen courses in this area. After Public Safety One, we can add Public Safety Two, or we can go straight into our fire technology, firefighter technology classes. And there's one and two levels for that that we plan to add. I mentioned earlier our CDC, IMC, SPC, some of the things that she's involved in. Of course, right now, she's very busy doing testing and accommodations for testing. She also does accommodations for classrooms. So, she works with the teachers on whatever classroom accommodations that students need. She organized our career fair that Mr. Palmer mentioned in his presentation. She also works with students on their career plans and then with teachers on course blueprints. We have a strong relationship with CBCC. Some of the pathways that we have with them are our welding pathway. And hopefully, y'all have seen the welding booths that we have on the Alexander campus. That's a pretty amazing setup they have in there. Turf grass management, actually, has not really taken off. We offer that every year, and so far, we've had three or four students to sign up, so it's not actually made yet. Business management in these fire protection technology classes, the ones that they offer are all online. So, our students can participate in those, but those are online classes. The Furniture Academy, our students, you have to be eighteen to be in Furniture Academy, but we promote that to our students. And some of them may go straight into that. Construction Careers Academy is new this year. And that's what our signing, everything was for last week that Mr. Palmer mentioned, but that is through CBCC as well. The Construction Academy, the Furniture Academy, and even Apprenticeship Catawba were all industry-driven. Each of those industries said, "We need workers, we need a way to train them and get them to us." So, it all started with the industry, and then they moved into usually working with CBCC on how can we get these programs out there. So, that's been a great model for us to follow. With Apprenticeship Catawba, so I threw in some pictures of our signing. We have two students who have been seniors in high school this year and have participated. So, they've come to school for half a day and then worked the rest of the day. One student at Sarsted, one student at Poplman's Plastics. I don't have a picture. We have one student who is starting Apprenticeship Catawba. He'll be a pre-apprentice this summer, and he will be working with ZF chassis components. But he was out on Thursday, so we don't have a picture of him. He was not there. So, we'll have three apprentices for Apprenticeship Catawba next year. We also included three students who are joining the Electrical Lineman Institute at Caldwell. Because, that's not a, technically, that's not an apprenticeship like some of the others, but it works a lot like it. There's a lot of apprenticeship-like qualities to that program, so we wanted to recognize those students as well. So, we do have three students for the lineman program. Our Construction Careers Academy, again, that's new this year. It is a partnership with Catawba Valley Community College. We have four students that will be apprenticing with Lake Electric. We have one with Hickory Mechanical. And those students will start also as pre-apprentices this summer. They'll take one class at CBCC, paid for by their company, and that's one day a week. And then the other four days a week that they're going to go to work. And that, if everything is successful during the pre-apprenticeship, that can continue into the school year as well. And again, as Mr. Palmer mentioned, we have three students that are going straight into the workforce. Two of them are going to be with a local construction company, but I was told the deal is not sealed yet. So, I can't mention any company names, so I just put local construction companies for two of them. And then one will be with Top Quality Electric. One of those students is a senior, so if he finishes his pre-apprenticeship this summer and everything goes well, then he's just hired. The other two will be students, continuing students at the high school next year. So, again, we will work with them like the other apprentices where they can come to school part of the day and then work part of the day if everything works out for them. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I have one question. Do we still have just the ten students that have signed up for the public safety course?
As of today, the last time I looked, there's just ten, yes.
Okay. And then, as we were doing Espy Watts Little interviews, one student had obtained a phlebotomy license in addition to a CNA.
Okay.
And I am assuming that was because she had gone above and beyond and had taken community college courses.
That is correct. That is offered through CBCC.
That was pretty incredible.
And I have had a conversation with CBCC, just because of some of our limitations. We can't offer pharmacy tech. So, that is a program that we're going to try to get started at the Alexander campus as well, pharmacy tech. Hopefully, next year, we're just going to see how it works in their schedule, too.
Good. Good. And I have to say that for the signing, I loved that the parents were invited, and many parents participated in that. And it was just A-plus, so.
Well, that was the first year, thank you. We talked about it last year, I saw on Twitter, because I follow some of the other CTE programs, that they had done it. So, I talked, I mentioned it at the end of school last year, and then Raimi's actually the one that came and said, "Hey, you talked about that. Can we do that this year since we have more?" And we're like, "Yeah, we'll, we'll get this together." So, the athletic department, Nathan, let us use their backdrop. Dr. Clover let us use the HR department's table cover. So, we were able to pull that together, but maybe I can find in the budget to purchase our own table cover that says CTE. We didn't have time for that this year, so we'll work on that before.
It was a wonderful event.
It was.
Thank you. I'm glad that y'all, you could attend.
Any questions or comments from the board regarding her presentation?
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to consider her plans, since she said the best was last, so let's consider the best plan last.
I'd prefer.
For a motion? Second. In a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Tonight, before we enter into closed session via General Statute one-four-three dash three eighteen point one-one A six, I would like to recognize Board Member Matt Cooksey, who has traveled across the United States of America to the Midwest and they tent camped in the national parks. And he gets the Yeoman's Award tonight because it either rained on him in the desert or it snowed on him in the desert.
We just got back, and it was supposed to be a camping trip in the desert and wore shorts and t-shirts, and they did not have normal weather. And we were sleated on, snowed on my and I. And thank you for the early college, getting out early, because it's made us, so far, this is the third national park I've been able to, in this one, we hit seven national parks and monuments in this trip. But anyway, yes, and I came back and barely survived the weather, though.
I think he was the road warrior. He must have logged a lot of miles, so hats off to Matt. So, this time, I'll entertain a motion to remove and we go into closed session.
So, move.
Okay, second.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Great job, everyone. Thank you for being here, Nathan.
Thank you.
Brian, thank you.